We are online.
Good evening, everyone in here out there all around the city. So that from Stephen Colbert. We are calling to meeting of the Kingston County Council Finance Committee to quarter. Here in six forty. On the evening of September the tenth. Two thousand twenty five. As our tradition now, we will start with the controllers report update. Telling us where we are, planning.
Thank you, Randy. Um, give you an update, uh, narrative report, the updated numbers for the lives. Um, what you have, um, I'll stay forward a little bit here. I'm giving you the standard action enforcement report, uh, for parking that's not the numbers there. Pretty similar to what we've done in the past, uh, once. Um, that still continues to be productive, uh, our, our staff out there working, uh, extra shifts and evenings and weekends. Um, sales tax revenue, um, it's slowly pipping up, um, as they slowly it's. We're now, uh, the last payment, uh, that we were notified of or setting at a hundred fourteen thousand dollars over there. Over where we were last year, um, we're possibly now in better position to meet budget. Um, I didn't expect that we do need budget of a deifying launch at pretty close one way or another. Um, so we're twenty nine seven percent over our prior year plans at the same time last year. Um, we've got a little more clarity now on cannabis, uh, bill tax. I've given you, uh. Updated printout there. I had the opportunity to have some conversations with. Uh, finances and movements for them. We received dollars payments, it clarified what periods therefore. Uh, we receive payments for the periods December twenty fourth through May twenty five. I expect that we'll receive another small payment, uh, for the. That second quarter, the, the marketing of May twenty five. Uh, but for the payments for those two quarters at this point stand at eighty five thousand dollars. So I know there are questions as to, you know, I think at previous meeting I mentioned I thought a hundred thousand dollars, Cameron's revenue was attainable. Um, it appears now to likely far exceed that amount on an annual basis at least. Right, so, uh, we're at eighty five thousand dollars for six, six months period. And I, my understanding is that amount is not fine yet, so.
Sitting at higher.
So many. So your help, your predictions go up or down?
Of course.
But you should not want. Yeah, so you're rocking the joint? We are, we are definitely not particularly here. So we're, we're looking good. Um, I take that for what you will, which we, we have a positive positive. You'll see in a few weeks. It's a month. Not from all of the time. I know, I'm, I'm living it every day right now, but this first and foremost on my mind. Uh, besides that, um. Most of the favorable, unfavorable variables that I've been reporting all year are certainly true. Uh, overtime is running, um, high. Uh, you know, unattended, uh. Ambulance, um, you know, that we're running a significant amount of overtime there. Um, we do have some positive variables in the regular pay there because we had some delay to backfill employees. Um, we continue to get more clarity on revenue collection for ambulance. Be a budget of one point five million. Um, the last time I reported, I had mentioned I were on pace to see the one point five million dollar budget. Um, the last month, on the last month's report, I said the collections of the last four months are averaging over one sixty. A month, I believe, was the number I gave you, um. This most recent month was over two hundred thousand, so over the last five months were a hundred seventy five thousand a month. Um, you know, that probably puts us on pace for, oh, I should say for twenty five, it's still gonna be. You can't really annualize it because the first several months we're still picking up steam, but, um, you know, you could be looking at. You know, the upper point one million of, you know, you know, probably approaching two million for twenty six revenue. Um, so that's strong. I think we still should take a conservative approach to budgeting the invoice revenue. Uh, because we are still in the infancy of collecting the revenue, but. We don't really have that two hundred plus thousand dollar monthly collections, uh, in our buyer, but. The four months before that were all great around one six. So that gives me some confidence that we're, you know, you're running off the one point nine million dollar number. Size basis, so.
Is this counting, um, insurance payments and other things like that?
Yeah, it's primarily, it's, uh, primarily, uh, Medicare or Medicaid insurance. Yes, a mix of all those, um. You know, we're, our understanding is Medicaid doesn't likely not have a significant impact next year, but from here after. Um, but, you know, that's, I'm thinking about the reason to temper. That budget because, you know, if we went one and, you know, hurt too high, we'd have to bring it down, but, um. I'm glad, you know, the, the one point five million dollar estimate was. You know, based on, you know, information we had from building company when we developed a twenty five budget, I was. Skeptically optimistic about that number. You know, wait, I mean, we're, you know, we're reaching a number exceeding it, helps close that gap. You know, I think when I'll end up getting it with the. Results are at the end of the year, but it'll, at this point looks like it'll be significantly on both sides, it'll be better than budget, right? So the expenses are running pretty true to budget overall, the revenue will be, it will exceed. And I think if you compare that cost against what would the cost of city to outsource. It, it's a favorable result, so. This one for a city, um, and, you know, good service, right? So, um, something new I put on here. This month, I did look at the last two lines on narrative. Um, here's got some interest in what our community preservation fund balances are in the recreation trust fund. Um, you know, the, the liberation fees in a community preservation fund. Um, these are the actual cash balances, it doesn't necessarily represent what like we've committed. Trying to see with the recreation. East of Pickleball, very good question, right? This is what's been drawn down as a date, like this is what's left in those accounts.
So the last couple of projects, including the pickleball project.
So only to the extent that a pickleball. Related payment would have been drawn from his cap up, so like. If it's been committed, but it hasn't been paid yet, like you have a natural paid vendor, so it, it wouldn't be deducted from this amount yet.
The same with the kayak was the other one that we just recently.
Yeah, so like, yeah, we have the brain, so that one, that one is still there. So this is like literal cash on hand as of August thirty first. So I figured I'd, I'd start putting this in the report.
Yeah, I appreciate that, great.
Because, you know, the, the default is with some commitments, the actual cash out versus what was committed, it doesn't always equal. Often it's less cash out that ends up being less of what we thought we would need, so. I figure that could give you, you know, this is literally that. Give you a touch of. Actually hold it at home at a time. Um. I was talking that, I don't want to skip ahead to your number seven, but, um, you know, I. I've had a bunch of terrorist stressors on my report for, as I said. Not much now, probably, you know, six months or so. Um, most of these items are items that are, you know, causing most of the much terrorist stress for the city. And what we'll look at is we're working on twenty six budget, so. I want everybody to be aware of that, I mean, these are. You know, and we, and with our tax cap, you. For the twenty five tax cap, when we did the twenty five budget, we all know we exceeded the tax cap. But we had some tax cap carry forward from twenty four to twenty five, which means. That means it's in years where the municipal is not exceed the tax cap. You're able to carry forward a certain percentage of what you otherwise would have been able to increase taxes by. So like, you know, it's basically a roll forward, so like, you know, if the tax cap is four hundred thousand dollars. And you raise taxes by three hundred, maybe able to roll over that one hundred thousand dollars to the following year. To allow you to increase taxes a little bit more, right? So in twenty five, twenty five, when we use all that tax cap. So you're getting back down to like a true two percent tax cap, so, you know, for the city. The twenty six tax cap calculation is. Allowed to increase taxes by less than five hundred thousand dollars and lower than calculated right now, right? So, uh, on a sixty million dollar budget, that's less than, um, one percent effectively. Um. You know, sixty, it's less than one percent of our expenditure budget. And I think we all know the expenses are going up by more than one percent here, whether it's salaries, it's benefits, it's our debt service related capital projects, et cetera, so. Um, you know, that's where, you know, some of the background for. Why I believe the city will be under pressure with tax cap, not just for twenty six. I think for the foreseeable future. Um, you know, with the current economic climate that we're in. That's my report.
Questions coming?
You couldn't say for me, not even say it yourself, I would have just talked about that.
I, I, you know, it, it will work itself later on, but I, at least. I, I, you know, it, it would work itself later on, but I at least wanted to lay the groundwork that that's, you know, it is part of the, you know, updating, they're trying to get the council all year. Um, I don't think any of these things are a surprise of. And where the, the stress is coming from. Um, but you can certainly, when we get into that conversation, we want to talk a little more detail, let's give more detail or get into any of these bold things.
Mm-hmm. So the community preservation fund, that's, that's new this year, right?
Yes.
Already at a hundred thirty.
Yeah, the, the, the payments are, yeah, the, the monthly payments are really picking up steam. Um, at first it was pretty slow because, uh, we were. It appears at some point in December, right? So, only contained in real estate transactions, uh, after that cutoff date. So the first few months of collections were, um. Based upon periods where there may have been real estate contracts that were in, in effect prior to the effective date, so the first few months were. You know, the payments were under ten thousand dollars, now we're seeing, you know, very large payments, so I. I would anticipate that, that. That balance will increase by hundreds of thousands of dollars a year, um. And, you know, I mean, that would be the inflows, um, the outflows will be determined by. Those who are governing the preservation fund. But it's certainly, you know, significant. Yeah, I mean, that, that, the money coming on that will be, I would expect to be, um. Significantly more than what we're seeing in trust fund. In the short term, anyway, what I can see is consistent, it's consistently growing. And it's a percent, and it's, it's a percentage of real estate transactions, as real estate transactions continue to. Grow, the market prices going up, it's just gonna, you know, inflation's gonna continue to have an impact on that as well, so. Um, you know, if you give some information on to, uh, the last, just to give an idea. Uh. Last payment we received for August. Was thirty four thousand dollars. Just about thirty four thousand dollars, so. The payment, uh, it's.
Are you looking that up, do you know when the fund board is, can it have its next meeting?
So on the, with that, we have a website, you know? Have they done any monthly? I don't think, I don't think it's one thing.
Is it only?
July was sixty six thousand dollars. And all this is driven by, like, when you see it, you know, there's some. And that, like, I, we get the detail, there's some very significant real estate transactions that are dropping, some of those numbers.
But it's likely higher during the spring and summer, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's when, when the real estate market's moving, it's when those closings are, um. But I think it's also impacted by, um. You know, the timing of very significant real estate transaction, because. Most of these real estate transactions, both real estate transactions do not have, um, the community. The fact that this community preservation be allowed. Because it's only transactions over seven dollars now, right? You know, it's when these huge ones are hitting. Um, you know, like, for example, you know, we got a two point seven million dollar transaction, those are uncommon. Um, that alone generated a twenty eight thousand dollar. Of the sixty six thousand dollars in that month, so, you know, it is, um. It impacted a lot of our, our individual transactions. Okay, but you're, you know, you're saving about a hundred thousand dollars in two months. So, yeah, a lot of money.
All right, then. You're in, it's the head power.
Does anybody else?
Uh, I can't. But it seems like a line.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to get the calendar.
Oh. I see.
Well, I can't because of that, I, I was trying to find that, David, that meeting for a clever ass, like, yeah.
Yeah, I know, trying to get the city, it's, uh, service unavailable.
Yeah, it's morning.
Yeah, they didn't have any issues. Multiple issues during the time of service, yeah. And it was back up. Later, or the afternoon after around three forty five, but I guess.
Is it rushing bot?
Yes. Yeah, I tried to get on this afternoon, like, like, around four three, it wouldn't go on, I thought it was my computer, but now I realize that's. To me. My apartment garage also was out of line by the last two days, they let me in free. For instance, that night, so.
Yes.
I have a request. Can we move up, so are you here for nineteen maple?
Yeah.
Can we move up fifteen maple and then three Johns? Actually, can you hear, I'm John, so both Johns. Items, the rental business, and then we have the social business that's present.
Um, Kristen is here too, though.
Well, I'm in.
Okay.
But Cassie can go home. But if we can move up at least fifteen maple street.
Kristen, you're here for, um, Hilton Wellness, right?
Correct.
That'll just take a second. So, okay, let's go ahead and do that one. Then we'll move up fifteen maple and then the two Johns.
Okay.
All right, uh, so what's the budget transfer? Kristen?
Hi, yes, it is a budget transfer of nine thousand dollars from general materials to contracted services. Um, this is for the Creating Healthy Schools and Communities grant, so it is a completely reimbursable project. It was for our Kingston Spotlight's Communications Campaign, which I'm very happy to share, um, more about it if you have any questions. And sorry, I feel like I can't see who's in the room right now, and I usually try to be in the room, I just, um. I had to, I had some childcare, uh, things that I had to take care of this afternoon, but. I think that everyone knows me, but I'm Kristen Kestner, I'm Project Manager in the Department of Health and Wellness, um, with Emily Flynn. And so, uh, typically she's also in the meetings, but since this was related to the Creating Healthy Schools and Communities grant, which is the grant that I manage for our department. I told her I was happy to, um, to share about this and answer any questions.
All right, anybody have any questions?
How's the project been going? This has nothing to do with your budget request, but just in general, how's it been going?
It's been great, um, I'd be, uh, happy to share a little bit more about it with you, I mean, it's a very visual project, so the communications project was. We had some additional funds in the past fiscal year for our grant to hire a storytelling team to help uplift the stories of our community partners. Through this grant after four years of having it, and so we interviewed Joe Baggans, who is the Kingston City, um, Food Service Director. The Principal at Mahar, the Principal at Chambers, as well as some of our food partners who work in food access and, um. You know, a part of the Complete Streets Council, so some of these are really incredible health and wellness champions that we had. We have this beautiful professional photography of them and these interviews and these stories about what makes Kingston, I think, so special in so many ways, so. So, yeah, it was, it went really well, I think it was really well received when we put it out on social media. And then we've had a few different radio spots for it, and we put out a newsletter, um, and then the grant funder has been really excited about it too, so. Thanks for asking.
Thanks, thanks for the report.
Yeah.
That's long.
Okay. All right. All these papers that don't make the reports. All right, um, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll do it.
Motion by Sarah Pastey, second vice to Shabbat, any discussions? Here's a discussion called vote, hold favorite.
I.
Name imposed. And this is unanimously, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
All right, read, by the transfer, the Hilton Wellness has attached, to make sure it stays attached. All right, now we'll move to fifteen maple, but this, the item is under old business.
This is the one that I sent you a while ago, I already had, um, the clerk's office put in your mailbox, they didn't want to put in. Personal information on the. A judge of, um, so you had it a while ago, um. They are asking, I don't have it in front of me, I can't, it's my computer now, um, so do you want to actually speak on it?
I don't even want, I understand.
That might, it might, just so I don't mess up, because I don't have the item in front of me, why, I just went down. So, is it okay?
Sure.
I can listen.
Sure, yeah, so, my name's John Ray, property owner of fifteen maple, also my primary residence. Uh, as well, I'm not going to give you specific dates, but earlier this year when I got my property tax bill. Uh, previous years, around a thousand bucks, give or take, this year, uh, about seventy two hundred dollars, so you can see to my surprise. Why is there a huge discrepancy, I understand. Taxes go up over time, but clearly not that much, right, sixfold in this case. So when I started to investigate in the process, it turns out six thousand two hundred dollars, I believe is the figure. Uh, was imposed on my property taxes, saying that as a vacant lot fee for. Five years, uh, much to my surprise, I've lived there for a good four plus five years and. Honestly, as of this meeting right now, I've never gotten an official explanation, that's why that charge was ever placed on my property, maybe never will. Um, but that's neither here, uh, nor there, um. Yeah, the hard part, I would say, um, and maybe feedback for you guys, honestly, I did, I do not, I don't, first time ever this type of meeting, so. I don't know what goes where with the communication, but I guess. From my own personal experience, one thing that I feel like could be done better is, in my case, right, personal experience, there's me. There's the city of Kingston Building Department, which did the speaking of my fee. There's the Comptroller's Office, right, which is the, like, collector of property taxes, and then there's the common tax. I believe it's the official wording, uh, for everything, so. Obviously, I've never been through this type of process before, so I pick up the phone. Call one place, they tell me, I called, I believe it was the Comptroller's Office, they probably called the building department, I called the building department, they probably called the Corporation Council. Called, called Corporation Council, I had to go back to the building department. So, long story short, um, probably a good dozen phone calls plus emails finally got me in touch with the. Right point of contact, I guess the feedback and the point that I'm trying to give is, um. I just feel like people should know the process, they don't have to know, like, they don't have to be the point of contact, or they should, they shouldn't be able to come. Point you into the right point of contact, or I just kind of went in circles, um, until I found the right person. Uh, to kind of get me there, um, but I think really that's. The whole ordeal's probably been a good six to eight months, um, I, I see my own. Maybe I should know more myself as just a citizen, but I didn't know, like, I had to write a letter to the older person, I didn't even know what the older person was until a few months ago. I think that's to be perfectly honest, uh, with the situation, I didn't know that this meeting was, you know, the second Wednesday. Three months, and, yeah, it was just like, everybody was like. It, it's kind of like today's society, and I kind of want to just put it on the internal, like, government type office, but I just really don't want to take accountability. That was always like, you call one department, you gotta speak to the other, keep that department, you gotta speak to another one, um, and so maybe in my case, it was just. If I, I just kept trying kind of thing, but it shouldn't be that much, it should be one, maybe two phone calls, create the most, uh. Get to the person you need to speak to, to understand the process, especially when something is brand new to you, and. I guess the frustration kind of is just like, there's no advocating along the way.
Well, there's also. I mean, luckily, not for you, but luckily this issue that you're dealing with is not something that we often deal with, so.
Yeah, the wrong situation, sure.
So, you know, the departments, whoever you talk to, they just might not have ever dealt with something like that.
Yeah, but say, I've never dealt with that before, let me find out some of the.
Well, I can't, I don't know what people said to you, I'm just saying, like, this is luckily. Uh, again, not for you, because you're dealing with this, but luckily this is not an issue that.
It's not, yeah, totally is.
Yeah, and now hopefully you know who your ultimate is.
Yeah.
And you can learn all about how the government works, because we do try to be transparent, we have some really good accounting numbers on, so. Um, whoever yours is.
So I think the, the hard part is every single month that passes by here, they charge you a percentage, so I, I still owe these taxes, because like, I never. They make you pay the full amount or nothing, you can't make partial payments. So, I'm not gonna pay seventy two hundred dollars when, in reality, I owe maybe a thousand or eleven hundred dollars, but every single month that passes. They have a certain percentage of their adding onto it. So every month that I'm given misinformation or being just stopped to go around in the circle, um, I've had to, you know, I'm. I, they're gonna charge me that, I'm sure, at the end of the day, even when it concludes from this meeting. They're gonna say, well, you owe. The eleven hundred, yes, we've changed that, but we're gonna also add your late fees for. March, April, May, June, July, and August, and if I don't get paid, if the number's not even taken care of by September, um, because we're already. Well, I'm talking about ways of that, then you can owe for September too.
Can we discuss?
Mm-hmm.
So, we did get information that shows that he does live at the property, and so it does appear like it's. Power, um, that should be correct.
And there was a communication from the building department, uh, I think that's one of the parts of your. Uh, and it says that, uh, basically was an error on theirs, the property previous to him purchasing it. Uh, was vacant, and it was never updated that he was the new owner, and since it was on the vacant property list. They just recently vacancy notice. So that's where.
Do we have the numbers? Uh, it's, uh, six thousand two hundred is, uh, a vacancy fee. Thank you. Let me guess, okay, uh, please, you have some wants there.
I mean, there's nothing we could do about that, right?
And he's waiting for late fee?
Same way for property tax, so, that's a question, but, you know, the property. You know. I understand what the property owner's saying, it's a, you know, difficult position for him, but. Um, but frankly, it's not fair, doesn't feel fair, right, but, um. And it's, you gotta follow state law, and, you know, that, you know, the flip side of. Property tax wasn't, I understand, you know. He's asked to pay seven times what his actual property taxes, so. Um, on the flip side, you know, you have property tax that wasn't paid and.
And is there any?
But it would be recalculated, but recalculated based, based upon what the actual tax amount would be.
Oh, so there'll be a reduction from the percentage of this.
Yeah, it would just be based on what the actual amounts of those units is.
And is there any provision in state property tax for impartial payments or no?
No.
That's the state, and that's the state rule, which we're subject.
Then you couldn't just pay the thousand bucks.
Right. And they can catch the rest.
Right.
You know, it's, conceptually, it's offset by, you know, property owners' ability to earn interest on the money that's not being paid. Taxes, but that's only partially mitigating, because I'm sure that, you know, the rate of return on that money is less than the penalty on the late profit tax.
Uh, so, does anybody have any question about validity of the claim?
I haven't.
Okay. Cause if they did, we need to, we're gonna turn the client session. Um, so I have a committee report here that reads. Request by John Ryan, the property owner of the ten maple. Street, SBL, six point three five dash five dash one six, removal of twenty twenty four vacancy fee levied against the property in the amount of six thousand two hundred dollars. Property owner asserts that he has been living in the property since twenty twenty one, and the vacancy fee was assessed in error. So the financial back here would be six thousand two hundred dollars, which we're removing from his charges.
Should, should be matched to the community report, should we have, uh, uh. You know, your findings. And you want the record to stand, uh, you know, in addition to what the property owner's request, that, that, you know, the claim was substantiated.
Uh, yeah, if you want to.
Just add this piece.
If you want to just quote that, uh, the building department has confirmed that, uh, the vacancy fee had been assessed in error.
Yes, I will confirm that there is a communication from the building department that says the fee was assessed in error. I will attach that with the. Committee. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Sarah Pastey. Second vice to Shabbat, is there any discussion? Here are no discussion, and I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
All in.
Hi.
Name imposed. This passes unanimously.
Pretty interesting, you can just like, say that stuff.
Yes, thank you.
So, yeah, government does his well, as now you know. Um, so, this is the committee meeting, it still has to go through the common council, that will be in. First Tuesday, March eleventh. And then, once that passes, which I anticipate it will, um, yeah, promise guaranteed, but I anticipate it would, we have four, both of them, letting numbers. And then, once that passes, which I anticipate it will, um, yeah, promise guaranteed, but I anticipate it would, we have four votes of unveiling numbers in the council, um. The mayor usually signs it the next day and then it'll be good to go.
I don't think.
But, yeah, so it's a little bit longer.
Yeah, so like.
So I, whatever that first Tuesday is.
So by mid-October, I could come here, possibly not here, but, you know, Comptroller's Office, and they would have the true amount owed, in which then I can pay.
Well, that would be.
Yeah, can I, can I, yeah, so I, I would suggest that you come the week of the thirteenth. Uh, October thirteenth, I would say, you know, by the time our office would get the resolution, it would probably be.
Monday's a holiday.
Yeah, probably you heard that week, um, and the figure that we would give you in October, it would be the end of the month. So, right, so whatever that number is, because it'll be approved on the seventh. Um, and then we'll have the number, you know, you'd have till the end of the month to pay that amount, whatever that number is.
Okay. So I guess just best point of contact is just come here that week.
First floor.
I bet you make a phone call beforehand to make sure that, you know, whatever the pass.
You can, I mean, you can, I mean, it'll, you know, um. If you watch the meeting, uh, if you watch the YouTube on the seventh, you'll see your, you know, this resolution go through. But then, when the, um, the actual resolution signed by the mayor, it'll go to the Comptroller's Office. And then, that adjustment to your tax bill will happen, and then I'll have revised figures for you. I would expect that would be on the week of the thirteenth.
Done.
And then you can just go to the first floor, if you want to call the Comptroller's Office in advance that week. Um, you could ask the Speaker.
To be.
Uh, City Comptroller. Um, I'm familiar with this, so I'll make sure you get the right figures.
Okay.
And if something doesn't, if it doesn't, for some reason, goes through the Common Council, I don't know if I have the contact, your office has it.
Yes.
So I will reach out, go to the President of the Council, if it doesn't go through, unless you want to come, because government is fun, slow, but fun. Um, now that you've learned so much, if you want to come to the council meeting, if not, if you don't hear from me, all is good.
Okay.
Bye.
And then in the other direction, if you have questions, anywhere up until that meeting of the Common Council, you can email me. I'm Randy Scott Childers, I'm the Chair of this committee, and I'm at Ward three, W A R D three, at the city address. So, you know, between now and that Common Council meeting, if questions come up for you or whatever, probably have to be the point person to be the questions with anybody in the city.
Um, what was that, the end of the meeting?
October seventh, Tuesday at seven thirty.
How many first two then?
It's probably already down. And if you, obviously welcome to come, but we also do our meetings on YouTube, under City Kingston channel.
You say that seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Thank you.
Now I have to say something to the gentleman. Thank you for your persistence and your patience and your input on governing the process from the point of view of.
Oh, yeah, not center, sure. I appreciate the money, so I get that. Trying to make it simple.
Thank you.
But thank you, yes.
Uh, so, you voted right and. Alright.
Yeah.
Alright, good, we'll move on to the next items then, uh, which is. Is we're moving to weaving a waterfront, waterfront.
Corrected. Mayor, like, just to change the name, said this was effective, I think.
I like it, it's small.
Yeah, it's lost.
Yes, I think so.
And this is way out. Right.
And, yeah, no, it's, he hasn't, but. So, I didn't realize it was election day.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, because I know, but I'm like, I'm not committed, so I was gonna. Wanting to figure out availability, but, but things.
Yeah, I should probably catch you tonight after.
Okay.
Did I say?
What we can talk about is rain if you want.
I have a root canal that lasts the entire month.
Wow. But that's the entire week?
Yes, root canal.
We could all be in the front of the song, there's no problem.
You can get the inner songs, I won't beat the root canal, so. Or so tortured, sorry.
See, tells me.
Now for something completely different.
Maybe John intends some internal bunch of ACs, you know.
So this is the equivalent, yes, and this is as bad as the root canal is.
Okay, alright, alright. Um. Yeah, so I'm here to talk on the project of, uh, weaving a waterfront, which is also known as the city's, um, raise. Grant, although the term raise is now being replaced by available at the federal level.
Oh.
Um. I do have, I do have, just for those of you who may not be familiar, I printed some overview map for those of you that have this. So, so, I know this project is. Good one.
Yes.
For a few months while we've been waiting on our federal partners.
You want to share this one while we're typing?
That's fine, okay.
You know it.
It's burned into my brain. The, uh, so this project, um, is focused on the city waterfront in the Rondau Creek, and affects mainly, uh, uh. North three, East Strand, as well as, uh, making some finished trail connections out on the, um. On the jetty to, to Thimston Point Park, um, it's. Overall, so this is the largest grant award in the history of the city of, of twenty-one point eight million dollars grant award. Which is a total project, and, and we actually got the additional one point five with that. Um, so this is, uh, overall nearly a twenty-eight, twenty-nine million dollars project.
Well.
Uh, the way it's structured is. Um, NICE Doc, which manages these or supervises our use of these funds. Uh, requires us to get authorizations on a per-phase basis for the project, so the first phase. Preliminary engineering, uh, detailed design and right-of-way incidentals.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, which has a phase cost of two million and change. Um. And, uh, we're required to fund in the, in the first instance for the, for that entire phase amount, even though. Uh, roughly eighty percent is expected to come back to the city as a reimbursement.
Ah, that is like.
So, we pay the, we, we pay the bills in the first instance, then we're able to apply for the reimbursement.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so.
Is this, is this money sitting in the state?
It's, it will be, it will be, um. Yes, the, the reimbursement solvency come from NICE Doc is federally through the state.
I was wondering if federally it's already in the state or?
Uh, the, the exact mechanics of that, probably not today, it's not, but there's a series of agreements, so we do a state local agreement, which. What I'm asking for tonight is necessary for the state to find that at the state level. That establishes the relationship between the state and the, and, um, and the city. That says, okay, city, if you do these things, we will re, and pay these amounts, we, we will reimburse you.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's the contract between the state and, there's, um. Additionally, a contract between NICE Doc and the feds. Which normally we don't see, in this, in this project, I have seen it a little more than usual. Um, but that, that governs those funds that you're asking, ultimately, from the feds through the state, is.
Okay. Great, thanks, questions, John?
Oh, how many phases are there for this project?
Right, so, um, really just three, the, the, the next one after this would be, um, right-of-way acquisition.
Mm-hmm.
And then the final one would be construction. So, um.
And I assume that phase three is the largest of the.
It is, yeah, that's correct, it's usually about, about eighty percent is construction and then twenty percent is for. Design, right-of-way acquisitions.
And how long is this project contemplated to go?
Right, I think, um, the schedule has probably slipped a bit, because the feds did go silent on us for a while, but, um. Construction, I believe, is into twenty-twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-nine. Can't take that long.
Well. This is my running room, so it's something that was gonna be.
Center.
So.
Well.
My walking room.
Totally, yeah.
Probably have to recognize each other.
I go at sunset, you probably don't.
I go at sunrise.
Don't go at night time. This project's aiming to fix some of those.
Some of those issues, right. And.
Wait, where the sun rises?
Uh, more of the tides.
And we don't know the likelihood of any federal clawback of this, so that's why it's, I suppose it's good that.
Well, that was our fear when we weren't hearing from the, from the federal partners, was that this might be rescinded, um, but. So far, so good, so, once we have, the, the problem is, you're, you're told, okay, congratulations, you've won a grant.
Right.
Okay, that's step one, then you gotta get a contract.
Correct.
Which, um, once you have a contract, you know, and you're doing the thing and receiving the reimbursements, you know, it's much more secure than just saying. Congratulations, you're, you're going to get a contract, you know. But with, with this, Common Council approved it, given the position to. Um, sign, you know, it gets signed by, obviously, the mayor on our end, I believe, in, in holding the, the. State Comptroller's Office.
Okay.
Signs, and there's. As I said in the second room, from the feds and the state, that's, it gets signed.
But this is the first step that has to happen before anything else.
Right.
Okay. Um, so, in this sort of service area.
Yeah.
There's the trailhead, um. By Jansen Street. Street nose, um.
East Chester.
East Chester, I think, um. Is there gonna be a restaurant facility? Is that part of the project?
So I think we should refer to there, there's, just shown for reference on the yellow line, that's actually not part of the project, but it's, it's shown here to show that we're building a network of connected.
Okay.
Trails. And streets.
So why did you think this about them?
Oh, just because the word trail.
Yeah, um.
Oh, oh.
And head means restroom on the yellow. That's triggering.
But there isn't going, there is.
Not as far as this project, and not, not as any part of any project that I'm working.
So is this project basically the red line?
Right, you know, well, there's multiple colors, so the red is, is the long, um. Deal with the alignment of the rail trail phase two. Um, and, uh, the blue is indicates the limits of work on East Strand.
Okay.
Um, it's labeled left strand here, that's incorrect. Um, so that's, that's involved, involves elevating the street out of the tide, it'll involve sidewalks.
Oh.
And, um. Really a full streetscape with landscaping, hardscape, etc. Uh, the green line out of, of point is the, you know, it's currently a walking route, but it's extremely narrow, so this project. Aims to make.
It's wide, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, the same.
The one, but sorry, is there a road there?
Yes, you're walking. On or next to the tracks, so this, this will create a safer, lighter. Thing, you know, so, so currently, you know, we sell, we, we tell the entire state trail users, okay, if they're walking, you can walk there with your own bikes and use the north street. You know, this, this would. Hit those by, by vendors off, off the, to a separated facility here. Then we have a component up on North Street and Delaware Avenue, um, involving fleet streets and elevated Delaware Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
Um, into the park. And, uh, yeah, and finally, there's, there's plans for a couple of U D charging stations. Which is just a very small part of this bigger project.
Mm-hmm.
No, it's a great project that we definitely need is.
Any other questions? Sorry, the committee report reads, the residential funding in the first instance of preliminary engineering detail. Design and right-of-way incidental phase costs of the weaving of the water. Active transition project, total base cost is two million, important three four thousand, the similar six dollar per cent. The potential grant amount is estimated at one million nine hundred thirty-nine thousand seven hundred five dollars. Balance of project cost, four ninety-four thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars, since is expected to be financed by bond, the offerer. The design project is a type-two action under seeker, a later seeker determination will be a construction project when the final details are known. So the estimated financial impact will be four hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Is there a motion to approve? So, motion by Steve Shabbat. Second by Michael. Is there any discussion?
Well, this one's a question, since the original committee report says, that's not the total.
It is curriculatic.
You, you, you're correct, does that represent phases, say, one and two, or?
That's this current public phase, the one. Has the title preliminary engineering detailed.
So that's the total cost.
Correct, or, well, that's the impact, the total is two point four million, which will have to be the bond amount.
The bond, okay.
Um. So we can pay this cost in the first instance.
Yep.
Jonathan, the bond is two point four, right?
Correct.
You have a timetable when you think we would come back for the construction phase?
Roughly two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Somebody else can help from that line.
Yeah, and there'll be one more phase, uh, uh, of right-of-way acquisition before that even. A small dollar amount, but it's, it takes a relatively long, um, time to acquire that right-of-way.
About a year?
Uh.
Or more?
Sixteen to eighteen months to do the right-of-way acquisitions, according to federal, according to all federal rules.
Okay. Thank you. As you said before, nothing happens fast.
Yeah.
Reasons for that, but you gotta start, so this is a choice to start, so good. Okay.
Uh, alright, hearing no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, unanimously, so much. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Cheers.
You up next?
Yes.
Dave?
We can turn it quiet.
Yeah, we just.
Someone requesting an interdepartmental question, and we have, everyone on the files.
Alright. Are we invited, John Stang?
By John Stang.
And Dan Baker?
It's okay, it's okay, it's perfect.
Thank you for the lesson.
Yeah, I'm looking for it. It's touching. I didn't bore you too much.
It's the only thing probably more boring than I'm playing.
(laughing) Listen, imagine front before one of these trials, even I, I have my car and I've had enough in this.
(laughing) The better one than me.
Yeah.
No one is still, all of us on these down.
You're the first to say you're bored.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, you look there.
Yeah, me too. Because I can't exchange that one.
Well, you know, so.
But you definitely are on my stretch this year.
You like it or not, you're getting what?
I'm told to one thousand. And you go with the opposite.
To you, okay.
Glad you're down.
Really warm. All right, we have three tax search reports here. I will do these one at a time. First one, just authorization of settlement in the matter of Parkview RJ LLC versus City of Kingston. Reduced the 2024 and 2025 assessed value of SBL 5 is 89-2-56. From 2,202,000 to 1,870,000. The estimated financial impact of that change on our tax revenues will be $5,019. Motion to accept. Motion by Steve Shabbat.
Second.
By Sarah Passy. Any discussion, hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, it's by.
Aye.
Passed unanimously.
(inaudible).
Second one, authorization of settlement in the matter of Chamelon RJ LLC versus City of Kingston. Reduced the 2024, 2025 assessed value. That's the L 5, 6.89-2-1 for 166,000. So in 22,000, estimated financial impact, 2,177 dollars. Motion approved. Motion by Steve Shabbat.
Second.
Second by Sarah Passy. Any discussion, hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. The third report reads authorization of settlement in the matter of Franklin Apartments LLC versus City of Kingston. Reduced 2024 and 2025 assessed value of SBL 5, 6.92-3-1-0-0 from 910,000 to 748,000. Estimated financial impact, 2,449 dollars. Do we have a motion to approve? Third time's a trial. Motion by Steve Shabbat.
Second.
Second by Sarah Passy. Any discussion, hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you for all that.
Thanks, everybody, for your time and minutes. See you later.
Are you going to speak to the grand office?
Yeah, I can speak.
Office, so.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, sir. Natalie, did I ask that to Steve? Budget transfer request, any impact of the transfer? It's just a rollover of existing grants from the 24 budget to the 25 budget. So whatever was already previously authorized and approved. This is just allowing her to continue to spend out these grants for which there will be grant collections and actually global grants. So there's no financial impact.
Do you have a video recording?
Yes. What would you go? This is more than just about anything. I think. I'm so hungry, I don't know if I really live it. It's not so much money.
There is, yeah, not much money.
Anything?
Still, firstly, exactly.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry. Does it? Oh, I'm sorry. It is here. 2,653, that's I have it. With zero financial.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Don on this one?
Let's keep it safe for me.
The report reads request to transfer 2,653,000 points to the million dollar 29 cents. Related to DRI small grants program, restore neighborhood communities program. Uh, it's all covered, so the financial impact is zero. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Michael Tierney.
Second.
By Steve Shabbat. Uh, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Now we move to the controllers. We're going to make sure the budget transfer.
The dollar amount is in here, um, is 1,0476,924. Most of which is, uh, just simply, um, the change in the accounting budget for some of the debt. Uh, particularly where it relates to, um, outside entities, um, like, um, such as library, um, in consultation with the state controller and auditors. Um, we want to reflect our full debt payments on behalf that the city takes out for related entities and then we record the reimbursement, um, through the tax levy as revenue. So it's, it's a wash, but, you know, we need these budget transfers to support the accounting. Um, there's no financial impact. Uh, the real need of the transfer is just to, um, pay for, is actually move money, part of violation revenue was over budget for the year already. Um, so we're moving some money from there to help pay the, some of the processing fees related to the tickets. Um, so that's a good problem to have, at least, you know, from the financial perspective. So that's a 61,350, or, sorry, yes, that's 61,350 of the transfer. Uh, once again, overall, no financial impact. It's a budget transfer.
Any questions for Don? Hearing other questions, uh, read the reports. Since request approval of the attached monetary transfer totaled in 1,476,934 dollars. Reconcile 2025 budgetary accounts on a year-to-date basis. This transfer has no financial impact. Move motion to approve. Motion second.
Motion or second?
Okay, motion by Steve Shabbat. Second is by Sarah Passy. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We move to the last item on our official. Point thing. Can I bring it to the last items?
Yep. So we all made this vote, or you want to go?
I mean, how about you intro, like, do it up and then I can speak to, you know, some, in terms of, um, you know, the pressures that they see and they hear. So.
All right. So I'll first start with, I mean, I guess an apology, which you keep doing during these meetings. Um, but last year when we did this, we did talk about giving it earlier. But earlier when I had it worked, it was when I was sick and I dropped a lot of balls. Yeah. I didn't help them in their sales. So hopefully moving forward, I will not be sick anymore and, um, we could have this almost earlier in the year. So that minutes later again is, is completely my body's fault. For nothing.
We accept blame and deflect with the same gun.
Well, I couldn't roll me in six, so anyways, um. So what this is, and we did this last year, I think everybody, everybody here was on the council last year. So, um, if you see the tax cap, you have to, before you can actually pass the budget, you have to approve of this through a local law. So moving forward, this would be just something that we do just in case. But I think this committee and this council probably knows that, you know, it's going to be because of government reports, month after month, that this is going to be a budget that, that things, like, very, my chance that it will, we'll have to do this. Um, I have not gotten the budget yet. I won't get it until you get it, but, um, I think that this is something that again we have to do. But again, it should be something that we always do earlier, but right now it is time sensitive. Um, so that said, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I would just recommend it's a standard practice. Um, you know, if you kind of remove it a little bit from the budget itself, you're not, you know, you're not, yeah, ju- just a timing, right? Like last year, we did it with the budget, um, just because the municipality, um, overriding tax cap doesn't mean that they'll pass a budget that does override tax cap. It doesn't force you to raise a budget, um, that override tax cap enforced. In case, you know, and additionally, you could have a resolution to, um, override tax cap. The mayor could give you a budget that's under tax cap. Why, it's recommended for several reasons. Uh, one, you know, I'd probably be like Kyle getting into some explanation. You know, kind of gets into the grand, you know, very granular, but, um, you know, the, the tax cap is, there's estimates in there. And, um, you know, if there's ever an error in the tax cap calculation, um, there can be real capture. Um, if you don't override the tax cap, if you override the tax cap, it's like a, um, you know, it protects the municipality from that. But, um, secondly, you know, last year you saw, you approved a budget that was well over the tax cap. Um, with the, you know, some of the items I've mentioned on here, um, I'll get into it in all detail. But I, in a foreseeable future, current economic climate, I don't see the city being able to stay under tax cap. Um, you know, for the foreseeable future, um, you are, you're, we're approaching a $60 million budget, right? A $60 million budget. Um, we're, you know, we're seeing, we're getting more pilot agreements coming in for some of the projects that are happening. Every increased dollar a dollar pilot lowers your tax cap because, uh, the way a state looks at our tax cap calculation, that's a, a form of raising taxes. So for an example, my calculation of tax cap this year would allow the state to raise taxes a beater. And I'm going to ask, you know, this is a rounded number, $300,000. That is approximately, well, you know, $60 million, it's like a half a percent of $60 million. Because remember, the tax cap is based on your property taxes, you know, the 2% on the property taxes is only 20 million. We have a $60 million budget. Um, you know, we face that fit costs that are going up, in some cases, double digits. Um, personnel costs, you know, can imagine what they're, you see the numbers on, on potential labor cost increases. Um, no one's asking for, um, you know, a, a flat raise or quarter percent raise. I mean, it's, and these are just the pressures that we're facing. You also, you know, we use $2.9 billion of fund balance to balance the 25 budget. Um, you know, the fund balance has come down from year over year. We need to break down that appropriation of fund balance, like, essentially, you know, that number that is the gap there. It's a stopgap of between, you know, between your budget revenue and your budget expenses. And you can't just play on using that amount each year because if the fund balance declines, you know, there's less cushion to rely on. So over time, you got to bring that number down. So, you know, there's a lot of pressures there. Um, you know, the city's sales tax revenue grew for, and other market-based, economy-based revenues grew for a number of years. You know, they have, you know, you can see from, you know, you know, from my reports that they've leveled out sales taxes, you know, pretty much dead level. So, you know, when you have a $60 million expense budget where, you know, most items are still rap- rapidly increasing, you know, um, I think employee composition, now there's still expectations there that if it costs are increasing, our debt service costs are increasing due to some of the projects we're doing. Um, you know, I'm not seeing a lot in our budget that's staying relatively flat on the expense side. There's just, you know, just a demand for ser-, you know, we have services that we provide. Um, we're just supposed to do business and, you know, when you look to the left, there's, you know, where is this money going to come from? Right, a $60 million budget. You have roughly $20 million in sales tax, $20 million in property tax, 20 million, everything else. Sales tax is flat. So now you have to increase. Right? And, and a lot of the 20 million, the 20 million size property tax, you know, a lot of that can increase. A lot of that are, you know, certain fees that, you know, pass part of the fee schedule. We always look at the fee schedule, but there's only so much you can do with fees. You want to, you know, uh, have appropriate fees, fees that are, you know, comparable to what our neighbors charge, et cetera.
And that would also just kind of people, like it's happens.
Yeah, it's just another way of getting there, whether it's parking violation revenue, it's, it's, you know, there's, there's all different things, right? That make up that rest of that going up all of twenty million, but by and large, um, you know, that twenty million doesn't increase a lot. You know, the, the pressure on sales tax really, or the pressure on property tax is a combination of lacking growth on the sales tax. And then, you know, the, the expense side of the budget, so, you know, I. I've, the budget I'm looking for twenty six is certainly appears to have as much, if not significantly more pressure than twenty five budget.
Hmm.
And I, I don't, I don't see the pressure slowing down next several years, you know, and, and that's, assuming the economy doesn't. Slow down even more, yeah, slows down more, and things start going backwards like it did back in, um. You know, over ten years ago, that you're, you know, then you're faced with, you know, declining sales tax. That's a different scenario, but right now, uh, it looks like we're going back to historical norms of sales tax and bumping up to three percent. A year, which, okay, it's great, it's five hundred thousand dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars is going to pay for the increases on a sixty million dollar budget, it's just not.
Right.
So, um, you know. I think, you know, just to be realistic, I, I just don't see. And with the current budget structure, without extremely difficult and painful choices, be able to, you know, get under a tax cap. Uh, once the economy changes. You know, in this.
And next week, well, same for the foreseeable future, right? I mean, like.
You know, yeah, uh, it's, once again, our, every, every council, every mayor would have a budget that looks a little bit different, right? But I understand that, but, um, you know, the budgets I'm looking at is, you know, a lot of the costs are fixed, you know, we have fixed labor contracts, we have. Yeah, certainly, you know, that fit costs are largely, they're fixed within the unique contract. Your debt service costs are largely fixed, um, you've already borrowed the money, you know, originally so much that we can do to, you know, work with that. Um, there's just not a lot of variable costs there, so, you know, um. To the extent that there's room to adjust or reduce expenses, it's, you know, you're really looking at programs and services and. You know, I, I think that the common council and the mayor generally agree on the services they want to provide and. Um, you know, there's just, uh, I just don't see a lot of learning to, you know, where. Maybe I'm getting into too far in leads, but, you know, where that number with the mayor's representative couldn't vary that much, something like the council. That would probably consider a dot because they're just. You know, the vast majority of those expenses are, are set, right? As long as, if the council wants to continue to provide core services, you want to plow the roads, uh, pick up trash.
In the streets.
Pay police, pay fire, you know, you want to treat a plant, you want to treat like all these core things, you know, and, and these costs are embedded in all of the services.
Yes.
Any questions?
I guess this is just more of a forward thinking question, but. All the parties that we deal with matching grants and extra expenses that come up. My thought is we need to start being a lot more thoughtful on some of these. Would that make, I think it's likely to make a difference in the twenty twenty six budget, I presume, but is that something that the council really should be. Addressing so that we can forward, I know you just said the foreseeable future, this is probably the situation that we're going to be in. So is this, would that counterbalance somewhat, would that help?
Probably, you know, um. If we're, if you're suggesting that, you know, say there's some capital projects that come to the, uh, that come to the, to the council and, you know, you. You know, decline to move forward with them, um. First, I mean, there's the validity of, of a, a project itself, will not doing that project cost the city in some other way, right? Um, you know, there's opportunity cost, I think that, you know, a lot of the projects the city are doing, um. Yeah, you have to, I think, do your own analysis of the project, but, you know, how critical is that project? What is the benefit, community benefit of that project? What is the grant funded portion of that project? And try and do your own critical evaluation of the project, now. By not, by not moving forward with projects, um. The, the impact that would have on the budget takes time because we mark, like, um. When. Generally, we borrow money when we're spending the money, you know, like you could approve a project today, you know, might not spend money for six months and then. Generally borrow money on a annual basis, so, but, you know, we. For an example, you borrow a project, authorize a project today.
Hmm.
We don't start spending money till sometime next year, I might borrow the money next, so I just, I don't even pay for it till following year. Over time, there's some critical mass that can be, um. Accumulated, but, you know, the debt, it's something. But once again, I think you just have to look at, that it is within your control as the council. But are you really, you know, I guess when you look at these projects, is there anything that you wouldn't do if there is, you know, that? I, I think you just have to do a critical valuation of the project, I can always, you know, if the council asks me, hey, this project, can you estimate what you think this would do? To our budget in some out years, I can, I can run a number for you, give you an idea of what that might look like. Um, you know, roughly every million dollars is, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, fifty to seventy five thousand dollars a, a year for like a long-term project. On, on debt service, right? So like, you know, um, you know, every two hundred thousand dollars roughly is a point on the budget. Um, I can run those numbers for you to. But I, I think you have to evaluate the merit of each individual project.
Totally.
But, and, and that's part of it, but, you know, like I can, like with this, or with our debt service budget, a lot of it is. You know, some of the significant projects that are there, right? So like, you know, Dees was a, a big pickup, that was in last year's budget, that's not really causing distress here, um. But you have, you know, there's an ongoing need for equipment, vehicles, um, you know.
Any suspensions in vehicles, I mean, I, is crazy. So much more in the last two years, so, no, but I was just thinking, just, like, I knew it wouldn't affect anything soon and, you know. Two members are leaving in a few months, I'm leaving in two years, if we probably won't see, um. Any benefit if we are a little bit more thoughtful, but I think that that's the best thing to do for Kingston, not just for our tenure on the council, however long that may be, um. So that's, I was wondering if it could be helpful, again, I know it would be in the future.
Yeah, I would say, you know, I'm thinking myself, you know, if I'm, if I'm a member of the council, what probably would help me would be. All right, this project here, what is the estimated financial impact of this budget, like on budget? Like, what, what is, you know, because we're talking, we're getting these millions, millions of dollar projects, right? Like whether it's a sewer from the vector, you know, these large construction projects, whether it's Dees or something else. Okay, you know, these, these numbers get so high, what, I don't know what that means on a granular level. What does, what would, what is the potential impact that would have on taxes? I can tell you, well, that project by itself is a, you know, and this is all estimated because we don't know until we actually borrow the, the money and what the rate is at the time. But I could give you a range, now this would be, you know, potentially a half percent rate increase in your tax revenue. This would be one percent, this could be a two percent, you know, um. So sure, yeah, I mean, I think those are good questions to ask, I think that there are certainly questions the council should consider asking, um.
Yeah, we.
And then you weigh it, and you weigh my, you can weigh their response against, you know, your internal evaluation of that project, right? You know, what, what is your tolerance for raising taxes versus approving that project, right? So.
Right, because like sewer, right, you're not going to do that.
Right, like, and once again, I should go back to, you know, some of these projects, there is a cost of not doing that.
Right.
I'm not going to have for you, that, what is it, what is the cost of catastrophic sewer failure? Or, right, so I'm giving you, well, I'm giving you a cost of the bonding of doing it, um. And the engineer, I can't speak for the engineer, but I'll always tell you that, you know, the cost will be significantly higher. To fix something when the damage is already done, you know, you start thinking like St. Paul, Washington Avenue, when.
Right.
Things to those nature, and that's in Clara, the example of, you know, the amount of money a city spent there, um, so.
Yeah, I've just been feeling for a while that the council has gotten used to, like. Being in good times, and so it's really easy to just approve of things because we were in good times, and I think even when we are in good times. We should still be asking these questions, just even if it's just a big habit of, you know.
Um, sounds, yeah, and I, and I think I, I mentioned this at, at a finance meeting several months back, but. I think having the mindset of every time the council person's spending now. Think of the funding from now, unless it's, unless you know it's from a grant, like if it's just, you know, these projects the city shared the bonding, right? Like whatever it is, that's not just projects, it's everything, right?
Hmm.
Is that we can't turn left and look to, it's not sales tax increasing funding, that's going to be property tax.
Hmm.
You know, other, there are rest of revenue sources that are growing. But by and large, the pressure is going to go to property tax, so, you know, when we're, you know, increasing an annual budget for, whether it's a new program. Um, it's a new capital project, whatever that, that city shares, I say, hey, you know, common council, this is going to be, you know, the net impact is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. It's probably going to come from property tax, you know, so that's where you have to make your evaluation of. Do, am I willing to, do I want to move forward with this project that has enough merit that I'm willing to. Maybe from sound, you know, per handed a budget, that I'm willing to increase taxes for that, because in this environment. You know, realistically, you have a sales tax budget of twenty million dollars, it's probably not going to move very much at all. You know, we have a handful of armed uptake of items, you know, uh, when, once you ask that, we got state aid that doesn't change much from year to year, you have. You know, you start getting into very smaller revenue items that even the increases just don't seem to add up to a whole lot, so. Whether it's parking, it's whether it's building revenue, things like that, those are some of your bigger, bigger departmental revenues, um. You know, so, good point, and I, I want to reiterate what I'm saying about the city, you know, the property tax impact of everything we do, but. Once again, it's not. Most of these items are, a lot of pressures, you know, it's bargaining into contracts, it's, um, mandated benefits that are. And these contracts, you know, things that on a sustainable basis, the council is. Passing through.
We're had.
Not that you have much, I mean, like, you know, my ship insurance, I mean, insurances are, our insurance plans are afforded to all city employees, those rates go up. You know, right, I mean, you know, the city obviously can try to bargain with these things, but, you know. But until you bargain changes there, and if you even could, um. Those are mandated increases that, you know, the city has to absorb, so, you know, the, the capital is a small component of that. You know, and sometimes it's substantially year over year, I mean, and we're seeing a general fund, what I expect this year for debt service is going to go up quite a bit in debt service costs. But that's, you know, one of the many factors.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, so I gave her any of the, the resolution to the local law. Nobody else has any other questions?
Report reads, resolution of the town and council for a local law authorizing the adoption of the twenty twenty six budget. The tax levy that exceeds the amount allowed under the New York State Property Tax Cap Law. Estimated financial impact is zero. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion. Motion by Steve Shabbat.
Second.
Second by Sarah Pastey, any discussions? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Okay.
Well, you do us.
Brings us to the end of our agenda. Second motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
In favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Lisa, good night.